I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, clerk, please call the roll.
Beckton?
Cheers.
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Leo?
Yeah.
Lewis?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
He's excused, yep. All right, very good. Thanks everyone, it's good to see everybody. Your packet, we have your consent agenda, the regular meeting minutes from the March 28th meeting, and the accounts payable in the amount of $21,823.84. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh.
Second, Leo.
All right, Gardner and Leo, motion by Gardner, second by Leo, any questions or comments about either one of those? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, very good. Have our staff reports, any questions or comments on any of the staff reports? I did want to comment, I like new, newish, newish. I started laughing, great. And I also see we have Lieutenant Enfield here, have any comments, you want to make a report, do an introduction?
I just brought in Deputy Joyce to make since her first official internship in the Sydney Airport. So I'm off here, I've been dating her from Rock here.
Welcome.
All right, very good, very nice to meet you, excellent, thank you.
Those guys are getting younger, I'm getting old.
Yes.
I would say both things are true.
I happened to be walking down Hound Street, and he was sitting in front of Sagatuck Gas Service, and I walked by and I waved, and he doesn't know me, I'm like, he's maybe fifteen or sixteen, so, but glad that you're here, Officer, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, he may look young, Madam Mayor, but he's quite experienced.
Yeah.
Actually, come from a tourist area, don't you?
Yeah, from the UP, right? All right, same thing, very good.
Mackinac area.
Oh yeah, lots of fun, then this will be no surprise to you at all. All right, very good, any questions or concerns or anything that you want to ask any of the folks with their reports? Because I think, who do we have with us? Scott's with us, hi Scott, congratulations, new baby.
Thank you.
Yeah. You getting sleep?
Absolutely not.
Very good, all right, if we have no questions, we'll move on, we don't have any agenda changes, so with this, we're going to, we've invited the group to come speak with us, Chris Clark, Betsy York and Demetri Tarian, to talk about dark skies, I have requested that Chris, and I know he can do this, keep it to five minutes so that we can actually have some questions, this would be good, because I'd rather that we have, are able to entertain questions than anything else, all right, come on up.
So I'm going to dispense with introducing myself and my little introduction here, but I'm going to start with, I want to talk about light pollution, light pollution is an artificial light that is unwanted, excessive, or inappropriate, and there are three kinds of light pollution, the first is glare, glare, if you've been driving at night up on Blue Star Highway, you know, you notice those big lights that are at the intersections, and you come up to those, and sometimes it's really hard to see what's going on, that's glare, it's when, glare is technically when light hits your eyes that you're not used to, and you, and it sort of causes difficulty, sometimes it can actually make it so that you can't see, that's really bad glare, and it's harder for people who are over sixty, and that's half of the population of Sagatuck, so glare is a big issue. So in this picture, you can see, one example, let's see, oh, let's go ahead, another example, another kind of of light pollution is light trespass, where light has been, where lights from one property light up another, right, and that's in an unwanted way, so you can see the picture here, on the left, that's, that's light trespass, the person not way over on the left is being lit by someone else's light unwanted, but their porch light is great, because that's not, that's just staying in their yard. It's not like bodily trespassing, it's more like disturbing the peace, some people think, well, so what? You know, we're used to having lights that we don't want, well, why should we, right? It doesn't need to be that way, we have lights, we have laws about sound disturbing the peace, why not the same thing for light? Skyglow, which is the next thing, skyglow is the cumulative effect of misdirected light, things like streetlights that should be pointing down but are pointing up, and all kinds of things that light, that light scattering into the atmosphere, and, and one of the things that happens is that you can't see the stars. There was an article I saw from Adler Planetarium in Chicago, where they said, "We should be able to see 5,000 stars in the sky at night, in downtown Chicago, they can see fewer than 100." Now, we're not that bad yet, but if we go to the next one, we're getting there. So here's 2012, 2016, whoops, it'll do it by itself, let it go through once more. So here's light pollution in 2012, 2016, 2021, just in our area, that little red dot on the left side is Sagatuck. Right, you wouldn't think that this was an issue around here, but it is, and it's getting, it's only going to get worse if we don't do something about it. Okay. Let's move on. So I'm going to try, highlight three ways that, that light pollution affects us. The first one is the resources, so thirteen percent of the resident, of the electricity that we use in homes is used for outdoor lighting. Most of that lights places that don't need to be lit, right, and if we, if you hit the arrow, so thirty-five percent of that is wasted, that amounts to nationwide $3 billion that's wasted, and if you think of that in fuel, it's generating four million tons of greenhouse gas, for example, that we don't need to be generating, so by paying more attention to the, how we use light, we can save a lot of money. People like to hear that kind of thing, right? So there's waste involved, that's the second issue, health is another issue. This diagram shows about melatonin production, melatonin is, is a chemical that your body produces, and one of the things that it does is it regulates the circadian rhythm, the day-night rhythm, right? And melatonin is released at night, so the shorter we make our nights by lighting it up, and by staying awake at night with bright lights, we're actually doing ourselves a great disservice. This loss of melatonin is linked to all types of cancer, so one of the things you can do to avoid that, if we go on, is to use bulbs that are warmer light, it's the bluer parts of the spectrum that affect that melatonin production the most. So for example, again, streetlights can be purchased, LED streetlights can be purchased that have this warm spectrum instead of the, the blue spectrum, right? So that's another thing you can do, safety is another issue, and I know this is very interesting for a lot of people, but contrary to what some people might think is common sense, brighter light and more light is not inherently safer. Okay, brighter light and more light is not inherently safer, so let's look at the next. There's been some research that's been done in different places, some interesting research results, in one place, after installing brighter streetlights, there were actually more accidents. And the next one, when LED lights were dimmed by seventy-five percent, people were just as able to see the objects on the street that they needed to see, so much less light was fine, next. And, and then that same place, when they asked the residents how they felt, and in various locations, when they've asked them about more or less light, they actually prefer less light. So they may think they like more light, but when they see the difference, they say, no, I like the less light. So it's this sort of weird thing that we have in our heads, what happens is that really what we want is well-designed lighting, not more light, but better light, right? So, my next slide here. So the, if we go ahead, the increase in light pollution is, is, is bad news, right? But the good news is, this is a no-brainer, it's not like other kinds of pollution, it's, this is pretty easy to fix. And from, from my point of view, if we can't do this, we're hosed, right? If we can't solve this biological, ecological issue, I can't imagine how we can solve water pollution, air pollution, all of the other issues that we have, this is an easy one, it has bad effects, and we can fix this. So one way to do this is to pass a lighting ordinance, on the right here, you can see the Sagatuck Township Ordinance, I'm on a group that's helping to look at the, I live in the township, I'm in a group that's looking at how we can make it even better. The city obviously doesn't have one, Douglas doesn't have one, Laketown doesn't have one, so it's something that I think you should think very seriously about, and I've brought in the packet that I left for Ryan, there's a couple of examples, a bunch of articles there, you can file that in your lighting, light ordinance folder, and, and check it out later. Another strategy is to work towards better streetlights, now if you look at this picture, which one of these do you think is most like what you have in, in the city? First one, second one, third one, fourth one?
Third one.
The third one?
First.
First.
From my perception, with a very unscientific, is kind of the second one, there's, there's some stuff on top, but the light's still, a lot of light is still going up, right? If you go to the next one, ideally, you want what's, and this is what's happening, right? You've got that focused light that's going down on the street, but you've also got a little bit less bright that's trespassing on the poor, the poor resident there, and then you've got the light that's going up in the sky that doesn't need to be there, next one? You can focus the lights, though, you can get lights that are shielded, so the light goes down and doesn't go, and then finally, you can actually have lights that will dim automatically late at night, so you don't have to have the really, really bright lights at 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, you can have good enough light, and as a matter of fact, we really don't need the streetlights, because people use their headlights when they're driving at night, and they've found in a lot of places, when they turn the lights off, people don't miss them. When they turn the streetlights off, they think it's going to be an issue, but they don't miss them, because they have headlights on their cars, right? It's mostly for pedestrians, I think, that we have the streetlights, and if the pedestrians aren't out at 2:00 AM, you know, so, lots of things to, well, in large numbers, shall we say, right? So next, one other thing I just want to share with you is, I think this could be a tourist possibility, right? Imagine if we were to take, for example, the lights on the Blue Star Bridge, and just turn them off, and instead of having lights up above for the cars, which again, don't need them, because they've got their headlights, if you were to run these colored lights like this bridge in Des Moines, along the side, right? Wouldn't that be cool? I mean, I think you could, if, particularly working with the other communities, this could become a destination for people, they call, there are people called astrotourists, who like to see the stars, and they go places where it's dark, right? And I think there could be artistically designed lighting, there are people who do that for a living, design lighting for cities that's more sort of artistic and subdued and subtle, I think there's a huge potential for that here, so with that, that's, that's as fast as I could do. Next slide, so we're doing some activities at the end of the month, if you've been following the Commercial Record, my friend Brad and I, and Betsy's been helping, we've been writing a series of little articles in the Commercial Record, and you'll hear some of what I've already told you, but there's some things going on, we're also having a little Dark Sky Night at Guardian, which would be fun, so lots of things happening that last week, questions?
All right, very good, good deal, questions from the crew? So I had, I had one observation, I mean, I love this, and I think it's, it's a great, you know, I'm curious, and I'd said, I'd sent a note to Chris yesterday, basically saying how I would love like a template or roadmap of how to get from where we are right now to where you'd like us to be. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, rather than assuming that we know how to get there, you're obviously spending a lot of time in the organization, the group that you're working with, I'd love, I'd love to see a proposal of how to get there.
Well, one of the things that's in the packet that I've given you is a handbook from this place called the International Dark Sky Association, and dark sky, you know, we're not talking about dark ground, we're not talking about turning the lights off, we're talking about putting light where it belongs, right? Trying to keep it out of the sky, toning it down, using what we need, so, just so everybody understands, I'm talking about turning the lights off, there's a thing in there about how to, how to build a lighting ordinance, so there's a model and some help there as well, so I think that's one thing that I would seriously urge you to think about. I would also definitely think about looking at the streetlights, you know, are there things that can be done to maybe make them shielded, so they're pointing down, to, I don't know whether they're LED lights now, but you can get dimmable, programmable LED streetlights, that can be turned on at dusk, or turned halfway on at dusk and full later, and then turned back later on, right? So there are things that can be done, I'm not, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a, an expert, I'm a concerned citizen who's done some reading, I'd be happy to do what I can to help you think about this, but, but I think that's what I would do, I would say, you know, if you want to make a commitment to looking at the lighting ordinance, I think that would be a great place to start.
Polly, you have a comment? Is there, are there any programs available with the utilities, are there, are there?
Consumers?
Yeah, consumers.
I don't know, in terms of, like, saving money?
It seems like there's a, you know, synergy or sort of an intersection between reducing costs, and it seems like it could be a good business opportunity for them as well, it seems like it's.
I think up until now, it's been counterproductive for the utility companies to say, oh no, you should do this, because they make a lot of money from those lights on all night long, so they're going to discourage you, they were up until recently, but there's a big development that you probably know what I'm talking about, electric cars, right, they're going to very soon be a great source of, of demand overnight for the power companies, and I think you will start to see more of that from the power companies about, you know, here are some things you can do in your municipality to save light, to tone down light pollution. I don't know of, of programs currently with consumers, or, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, building on your comment about a roadmap, I think it would be really useful for, for this community, given our, our large number of short-term rentals, to have a, some way that we could work with, with people that are, that are renting properties out, because obviously, if you're staying at an Airbnb or a short-term rental, there's no incentive to be efficient with your use of the lighting, I mean, I can speak from experience being a resident in a high rental area, that some, some weeks during the summer, just the lights run all night, because someone's left and left the lights on, and it would be great to find ways to, you know, because it would actually be beneficial to the property owners to reduce their, their utility burden, you know, for the properties that they're renting, so I think if we could find a roadmap, and some examples of other communities that have been successful in, in selling this to the community, and, and getting everyone to buy into it would be great.
Russ?
Yeah, Chris, pleasure to meet you, Betsy, again, thank you very much for bringing this to my attention back, and I forget when we first talked about this, but I'm intrigued by this idea, and I've seen other communities where it's been successfully implemented, and it's a plus, in my opinion. A couple of things that come to mind, one is, I think from a roadmap standpoint, I agree with that approach, I think one thing would be for the council to think about making a policy recommendation to the Planning Commission to begin to think about how to incorporate this into the zoning code, that would be a natural place for that ordinance to land. And number two is that, as you may or may not be aware, the city, the township, and the village of Douglas City is in the process of updating its master plan, and the tri-community master plan, this would be an ideal time to begin talking with the three municipalities, because we're just starting the planning process to incorporate this. I, I'm supportive of this, I think it would be a great move for the city.
I think it would be an awesome thing for the three municipalities.
So I think, I think the timing's really good right now, and I know the Planning Commission would be speaking as representative to the council, from the Planning Commission should be open to a discussion about this.
And I would be happy to help as I can, again, I am not the world's expert, I know where to find resources, and I can, I'll help any way I can, and I can help you find people that can help too.
Yeah, as, as I mentioned to you, Russ, the township, we have worked, Chris and I have worked on updating their ordinances, so it is really good, and I think they're probably going to hire a firm to bring it up to speed, these are all over the country, good ordinances, you can copy and take, so they could maybe get that to you when it's done, and there you go, that's the path.
Don't go, introduce yourself, just for the record. Just for the record.
Betsy York. Address?
Douglas. Sounds good, thank you.
I, I put a few handouts over, there's a little outline of, of what I said with some of the high points, if you'd like, and then a couple of flyers, one, just general flyer about light pollution, and one particularly, I'm sure, sure that one of the main issues is safety, that you're most interested in. You know, saving money would be great, but I think people are worried that if they turn the lights down, things will not be safer, and I think if you take a look and you read what's out there, you'll find it's, that's not necessarily the case, and a lot of the research that's been done that says we need more light is done in inner cities, right, and it doesn't necessarily apply, even the ones that say more light works. High crime areas, well, we're not really, yes, there's crime, but it's not like South Side, Chicago.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we've come to the public comment on agenda items only, if you're present in the room or you're online, and would like to make comment on agenda items, please come on up to the podium, introduce yourself, your place of residence, and what you have to say, anybody? Anybody online, Cindy?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, very good, we'll move on, then, we have no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, first up, Algonquin County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Services Agreement Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you'll find this on page twenty-eight of your agenda packet.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See you later.
So it's time to renew your sheriff's contract. And the highlights are, it's going to be less than three percent, and we, we have Lieutenant Enfield here.
He's agreed to.
To agree to that, although he's not making direct eye contact.
He also brought, he also brought backup, so I think.
You know, so this is going to be your first review, all right, you've had a contract with the, with the sheriff's department for a while now, so we're renewing it, the, the other new thing is that they want to begin to own their own vehicles for insurance purposes, makes total sense to me, own and operate their own vehicles. And I think that's going to be a transition that, just moving forward, not to release our current vehicles, although they may purchase some of our current vehicles, but we'll have to work out that type of detail. Those are the highlights.
Okay, take questions.
Do you want a motion before we discuss, or no?
So this is the, again, first review, so there's no action really necessary tonight.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I like the idea, and presumably, with the vehicle piece, you know, we just went through the process of purchasing a vehicle, which was quite expensive, presumably, if that gets rolled into what the department as a whole and the county does, there's be some economies of scale, presumably.
Correct.
And, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so when I first got here, fourteen months ago, the city was in the process of purchasing a vehicle, and the interim manager was tasked with purchasing the decals and all the things that went in the vehicle, she had no idea what she was doing, and then it was turned over to me, I had no idea what I was doing as far as purchasing the equipment that goes in the sheriff's vehicles, and then, then I turned to Lieutenant Enfield, and I was like, why, why is the city doing this, rather than the sheriff's department? He's like, I don't want to speak for you, Lieutenant, but, he's like, I don't know, doesn't make a lot of sense. So, going forward, it makes much more sense for them to own, operate equipment.
I mean, it was, it was actually a subject of discussion before the council for a number of meetings, and it was very, it was very complicated for all, you know, staff and, and council, so I fully endorse this, this move.
My one question for Ryan was earlier, it references Schedule A and B in here, but I couldn't find a Schedule A and B, so, that would be, can we see?
That's because the Schedule A and B is not there.
Okay.
First review, I'll send it out to council.
Very good.
There is a sample motion, if we want to make it, to allow staff to continue to negotiate an agreement with Algonquin County for police services, bring back finalized contract for council approval, that ties into my next question, that when do we expect to see this back on the table for council, actually?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, so maybe that would be the motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to allow staff to negotiate continued agreement with Algonquin County for police services and bring back finalized contract for council approval at the second meeting of the month, which is what date?
Twenty...
Today is the eleventh, so, two weeks, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Gardner, second by Dean, any other questions? So this is a one-year contract, and we'll do this, right, that's what I remember seeing it.
I think this goes out to twenty twenty-five.
Oh, good.
The three-year, that I read that. Yeah, there's not, there's not a lot of, first of all, I learned a new word, ministerial. Ministerial function is one where the authority has a duty to do a particular thing in a particular way, awesome word. I was, I found it quite confusing, I couldn't understand the wording about the schedule and the coverage, you know, it would refer to, we will not give you 24/7 coverage, but I could not understand exactly what coverage we were getting, and they talked about eighty-four hours and twelve days, and I, I was quite lost, so I'm hoping for some clarification in the terms of.
I think that's under item four, right? Item four, and the agreement is what I'm seeing, because I had the same, same.
Personal. Under personal.
Item four, under personnel, and I, I had a difficult time kind of mapping my way through that same thing, so.
Have the same experience, yes, I, I just could not quite make sense of it, so.
Agreed.
And.
Clear to me.
And just to clarify, item number nine term, the initial term of this agreement shall be January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and unless terminated in accordance with Section 1011, shall automatically renew each year for successive one-year terms.
Yeah, number nine.
Yeah, so it is one year, and then evergreen from that point.
Okay. Very good, anything else?
Good, I'm good.
All right.
Lieutenant, you good?
All right.
Lieutenant, can you please step up? I'm sorry.
Illegal mumbo jumbo.
We're in the, the last contract.
Okay.
You guys aren't going to see, I mean, from the sheriff's perspective, you guys aren't going to see any different covers than what you guys are getting now, so.
Got it. So we'll just have to have that clarified, I guess, in the contract.
Yeah, it's all written in there, all the contracts are kind of the same with that, so.
All right, very good, all right, motion by Gardner, second by Dean, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm second.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have Aquatic Doctors Lake Management Incorporated Contract for Invasive Species Treatment Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you're going to find this on page thirty-five of your packet, and so the motion is, approve unit pricing from Aquatic Doctors as presented, and direct staff to manage, manage the treatment process.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, motion to approve unit pricing from Aquatic Doctors as presented and direct staff to manage the treatment process.
Second.
All right, motion by Leo, and second by Stanton, questions?
Yeah, Mayor, on page thirty-eight, the signature page for the city of Sagatuck, there were program options, one-year, three-year, five-year, what are we approving?
We're going to, I would recommend you approve the one-year.
Okay.
Yes.
What's our budget for this?
It's a unit price.
So what's our not-to-exceed budget, then?
We don't have that yet, so, they're going to come out, and I'll bring this back to council.
Okay. I'm a little concerned when you just see unit prices.
Yep, understood, I would be too.
You get, you know, like, in the, especially when they start reading in some of the details, like other nuisance plant growths they could treat for, and then, whatever, there's one other area there. So I'm paraphrasing, basically, we can just add to do things that we think are necessary.
Sure.
And there's some other language saying we're limited by what we can do by the state of Michigan because of the type of waterway it is. I'm sure that that pulls into it. But I mean, there's something like muck treatment. Well, they've never treated muck. So I just, I'm curious to see what type of, you know.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Backstops and stuff you're going to have.
I hear you.
Okay.
And I have the same concerns. And so if you look at the narrative in my cover page, I talk about cost concerns and I was telling the, the company that the only way I can see these costs going is down. So this is on page thirty five.
So last year, what was, if I recall, what it was that we approved, wasn't it like eleven thousand or?
What are you?
And didn't we have a donation?
We did have a, we did have a donation. I thought all in it was closer to twenty thousand. There were a couple of treatments and and but it was subsidized to a certain extent by a very generous donation.
Then we had to buy in from property owners for, I don't know where that's at. On the agenda.
So I'll bring back final cost.
Okay.
But they should not exceed the cost from previous year.
Okay.
That was my point. Sorry.
We're not going up.
Right.
The expectation is if it's not working, we need to do something else. And if it's working, if it's working, the price should go down.
So I will, I will tell you, living right over there, that what happened certainly improved the condition. I don't know as far as where you guys are looking. We certainly noticed an improvement with the treatments, which was really good. Our little two islands that were growing stopped and one went away. So that was a good start.
Oh, no, it absolutely worked. Somebody that was navigating a boat in that area, it definitely made a difference through the course of the season. And had it not been done, it would have been worse. The issue we have though is the Eurasian mill foil only, only grows out to a certain depth with the water levels dropping. Potentially, there's potential for more of it to spread because there's.
Yeah.
The water's down. So we'll have to see.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Well, hesitantly say yes.
Yes.
Hesitancy, yes.
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 Absolutely. Yes. Full faith in our mayor. All right. Very good.
So much for the MML trade.
Yeah. All right. Next item up, Butler Street Road Improvements.
Yeah, thank you. This is on page thirty nine. And we were looking at extending the pavement, the resurfacing of the road. And what do we have here? John Moxie.
So great to be back.
Hi. Good to see you in person.
Yes. I don't know if the rest of you feel like winter flew by, but it feels like yesterday we were kind of shutting down the Butler Street project after finishing sanitary sewer. What they did with the winter is they filled in the patches that were not concrete with asphalt millings. Basically, people have been riding on the millings all winter. We are approaching quickly the time when asphalt plants are reopening. It's a little late this year because spring is a little bit long this year. Or spring is a little bit late this year, I should say. But the week of the eighteenth, they're talking about having asphalt to put down. So we should be buttoning up that project here in the next few weeks. One of the things that came up over the winter, credit to Mr. Becken, talking about should we extend the paving? Basically, we, we pulled out the pavement for that south half of the block essentially there to to get the sanitary sewer in. The north half of the block, none of the pavement on Butler Street is in great shape. But that's one of the areas that's, that's a little worse than others, I think. So the, the idea would be to extend our new paving, at least through the Main Street intersection. We first looked at pulling out the pavement completely, doing like a three inch, basically full depth replacement. That was on the order of thirty thousand. We kind of scaled that back and we got a quote to just mill out as before they do their paving, mill out an inch and a half and then just cap the, the whole thing when they do the top course of paving. It's not a perfect fix, but frankly, neither is doing a, a three course because we know we have other underground needs in, in Butler Street that eventually we're going to have to get to. So that would be the, the fifteen thousand basically is to extend where we have torn up today through the Main Street intersection, going north through kind of the park area there. And that would be the, the net cost basically to, to do that additional paving.
Got it. Is that, can you still crack seal that, that approach?
Yep, still crack seal it. It's, it's going to reflect through pretty quickly. Usually in the first winter or two, you'll start to see cracks popping through. But yeah, you can crack seal it just like any other asphalt pavement.
So would that be extending it out past the restaurants, past Main Street?
Correct. Yes. When I say through the intersection, basically the, the asphalt that's in the middle of Main Street and Butler would all be replaced there.
It could use it.
Yep. Yeah. And, and I will just mention, we, we also, I was working with, with Scott to get some prices from the contractor to do some other high priority paving needs in town. The asphalt unit price we have is, it's a pretty high one because it's based on a pretty limited area. It's, it's proving to be kind of the market today. I'm hoping if we give it a little time and let the market settle back down wherever it's going to settle. Given global things, we'll, we'll be able to do better. I got one price already back just to compare just from another contractor. And it was frankly, a little bit higher than, than what these folks priced out. But right now, what we're recommending is, is do the, do the stuff that's within our, you know, project boundary. It's, it's contiguous with what we're doing. And then we'll circle back certainly and, and look at those other areas.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyway, thank you for being here in person. It's good to see you too. An area that keeps being brought up is Elizabeth Street up on the hill between Allegan and Francis and then Francis in front of Councilman Dean's house. That stretch of, that stretch of Francis and Elizabeth is frankly terrible. And it was on the report that the city manager had shared with us in terms of the, or at least was shared with me, I think everybody saw it. That was, that was deemed to be fail, I think is what the. And it is, I was kind of pressing on that. I'm also thinking ahead is that the school's got construction going on starting shortly. So I think any major road repairs up there would be probably not good spent money because of all the contractor traffic.
True.
So, but it needs attention. And so I'm sure that the DPW will probably do some hot patches up there, at least to make the road passable. But it's, it's, if you have not driven up there recently, go up there because you, you'll knock your teeth out. Right. I, you know, and I don't want to sound, I'm normally not very dramatic, but it's bad. It's really bad. It gets a terrible, a large amount of traffic. It's one of the most heavily trafficked roads in the city. So.
He's not wrong. That's why I got Jeep.
So I'll entertain, entertain a motion.
One question, one more question. Any, anything on the four way stop? I read it somewhere, which would be Francis and Butler.
Francis and Butler, we, we did get pricing. Frankly, if you wanted to do it, I forget what the price was. It would probably be on the same fifteen thousand dollar order.
Could it be done at the same time?
It's, we, we would have them do, yeah, it's the same equipment. So we would have them do that at the same time.
No, I don't think it is.
It is, it is not in the fifteen thousand that we've presented.
So it's, but it's not in this motion.
Correct.
So we want to discuss this. I mean, if you've tried to walk across the sidewalk or cross, across the road down there, you would.
You're right. It is, it's, it's bad. It's very bad.
Credit, credit to Scott. He got that one on my radar. We walked it together and in it's, it's worse than Main Street intersection.
What do you, what, what do you think? Is there any efficiency in adding it?
Your hesitation, to be frank, is cost.
Yeah, that, that was it. If, if you have another fifteen, twenty thousand to spend, that would be a good place to spend it. I mean, these are all good places to spend it.
Well, I mean, that's what we have a treasurer for. You know, I mean, Pete would be able.
I mean, we have the road money. There's no doubt. And again, I think your major concern is the unit pricing.
Yeah, yeah. And like I say, I just got that other quote back today. So it's, it's not out of line with where the market is. It's just shocking to me when I was used to, you know, figuring a hundred dollars a ton kind of at the top end. And we're at a hundred and seventy now, and that seems to be the new normal.
You know, when, when I look at projects like that and see fifteen or twenty thousand, I don't consider that a large amount of money for a road, even though it may only buy you five years. Still five years because how, it's going to get worse. So I, I mean, I have a tendency, you know, I feel it should be done.
No, we don't have, we don't have no motion. Should we have a motion?
Well, I need us to figure out what we're doing. Yeah. Workshop? Well, no. So talk to me about what.
Butler Street. That makes sense for mobilization, economies of scale with our unit pricing, which apparently is kind of fair market at this point. I'd say go ahead and, and adjust the motion that's on in the packet and increase it to thirty five. Because I have.
Yeah, I'd probably put twenty because we were going beyond that intersection a little bit. The one lane is really bad.
Double it to forty, up to not, not anything above.
Not to exceed if however you want to for it. That's.
What do you feel comfortable with?
I think thirty five to forty is, is kind of.
Forty, we're not going to spend.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Somebody needs to make it.
I'll make a motion to approve a change order for forty thousand dollars to repair Butler Street and the intersection of Butler and Francis.
Okay. Second, be the second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Gardner.
And just.
By Leo.
And I'll just, now that, now that we have a motion, I'll just make the point. I, I think, yeah, it would, it would look a little bit funny to have, you know, one section of Butler Street with like a pristine new paving job and then, you know, less than a block away, then it, then you're on the Khyber Pass again. So I think, I, I think this is sensible.
Intersection from a business.
It just, I mean, for visitors, it just would be bizarre.
We can do all the, all the, we do all the lining ourselves, right?
DPW.
Yep, we're able to do that. So we don't have to pay a, you know, company to strike, do the striking, we can get capacity to that ourselves.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I, I think basically I, I recognize, you know, it might be time to sit down and add a workshop. Let's go through the road. Because I know for a long time, we've had the road project list like prioritized. It'd be a good time to review that for everybody's sake.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting couple of years to determine, submit, in my view, putting a lot of money into roads when you've got this lead and copper rules staring over you. And you have to work that in. And then you've got.
Yeah.
The potential and possibility of funding availability. And I think that's why we kind of said we're going to take a pause and kind of just kind of, you know, whack them all a little bit.
Yeah, same thing with Russ's point about the school. I mean, we recognize there's a need up there, but yet to do anything before that, just wasting money.
There's a lot, you know, but one, yeah, asphalt prices driven by the price of crude oil, global unrest, you know, cities can't put off everything or then you've, then you've got this nightmare on your hands, you know, because you've waited too long. So it's, it's a difficult one, but I think sometimes we have to bite the bullet and, and to do it in a sensible manner. I think getting Butler Street, to the extent of it, looking better, I think is, is wise at this point.
I agree. All right. Very good. Next up, fly some Vanderbrink Project Cost Increase for Campbell Road.
Page forty one of your agenda packet. So I'm just going to lead in with the sample motion, approve the change order for engineering services. It's a recommended sample motion. Seventeen thousand four hundred for the Campbell Road project.
All right. Johnny, have any comments?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll try to be brief because I know you'll have some questions. But flashback to last October, we opened bids on this project, Campbell Road, I, I guess flashing back further. Shared project with Douglas. We are replacing the water main. We're widening the shoulders to give pedestrians a little more cushion out there and then, you know, resurfacing everything, putting it back together. We opened bids back in October of last year and there was a huge spread in our bids. We had an engineer's estimate of like nine hundred and some thousand and our bids ranged from seven hundred to one point one to one point three. We got three of them. Our recommendation of award letter was a little different than what we usually write. Basically, we said the, not mixed reviews, but what we heard about Southwest Transporter Contractors that they're, they're good to work with. They'll do what you ask them to do, but they're, they're small. It's, it's maybe a little bit big project for them. And that has, that has been the case, basically. It has taken quite a bit longer to complete the work than what any of us, I think, anticipated. The quality of the work has not really been a question. They've done everything that we've asked them to do. They've been very, you know, courteous, cordial, good to work with, but they're very small. They, they have had times where there are two guys out there putting in water main, which is, you know, unique for us. We kind of recognized this early on. As soon as, as soon as they got a few weeks in, we recognized this is not going to get done in the time that we've estimated. We had a twelve week kind of construction engineering budget. When we put together our budget, we have to estimate something. And so that's kind of what we estimated. We're heading somewhere on the order of twenty seven weeks probably to get it done. Schedule for the project, this was originally envisioned more as a traditional, we're going to start in April about now and go through, you know, the Fourth of July roughly. I think it was over on the other side of the river. They said, we're not real comfortable with that. If things run over, it's going to run right into the summer. And, and to their credit, they were right. That was a good idea. So we kind of did this unique situation where we split the project in half. We built the water main in the fall, which ended up being fall through, you know, today and ongoing. And we set up the road work to happen in the spring when the asphalt plants open. So in our twelve week budget, we kind of estimated eight or nine weeks it's going to take to do the water main work in the fall and three or four weeks on the back end in the spring to do the road restoration. And the way it's turning out, we're not shutting down over the winter. They've, they've been poking away at it all winter long. I've second guessed myself more times than you can imagine in the last three months. We do have something in the agreement that says the water main work, we want it done in December. We didn't really put the teeth of liquidated damages with that. If you remember last fall, we were just kind of heading into the time when supply chain shortages and, and contractor pricing was, was kind of starting to get outrageous. And we were afraid we're going to kind of add risk to our project and, and chase away some bidders.
John, sorry, what, can you explain what liquidated?
Liquidated damages, yes, yes. That is a contractual term. Basically, it says that if this project doesn't meet the schedule, the city doesn't have to demonstrate we have X, Y, and Z costs. It's basically in the contract that if the project goes over schedule, the contractor is paying these damages back to the city. It's being deducted from their payment. Those kick in at May twenty six. Basically, when we were putting the project together with this revised schedule, what we heard from the cities, what we care about is getting this project done before, you know, Memorial Day weekend. And so that's when we put the teeth of the contract in place. We had a target date, I'll call it in the contract to get the water main done in December. But we didn't put the teeth of liquidated damages on it. And in hindsight, I don't know if I would change that because if we would chase away this bidder, your next bid was one point one million and that one point one million with that extra risk might have been one point two or one point three. I don't, I don't know. That's one of the things. The other hindsight, we probably could have cut more. We, like I say, we reduced down very early just to try and match the production of the contractor. We can go to a certain degree. But in, in hindsight, I think we would have cut back more. So we've been discussing informally, at least with, with Ryan and Rich. You know, we're, we're going to be over budget. How do we deal with this? Since about January, we've kind of started informal discussions and meeting with them last month, you know, they, they gave us the direction that try and make it as palatable as possible. We're not trying to add insult to injury by any means.
When we say we, you're talking about police.
Yeah. So what we've done is, is we've tried to use some reduced billing rates. We tried to cut our hours once we get through kind of the main underground portion of the work. But basically, we put together a revised budget to try and get us to that May twenty six, looking at, there's going to be no shutdown is the way it's looking. Right now, they're about a quarter of the way done with water services. We're hoping that if things pick up, they'll have those done yet in April and then do the road work in May is, is kind of the way we're, we're hoping. But again, we've been meeting with the contractor every two weeks for the last, you know, four months and it's been going slow. It's been going slow.
Okay.
Credit, credit to city staff. City staff has been here the whole time. Um, credit to Cal Lake, they've been working with us, um, trying to get this thing done.
Okay, all right. So we're basically asking for a change in addition seventeen thousand four hundred dollars.
Yes, and that is proportional. Again, you're, you're sharing these costs with, with Douglas, so the, the way we broke it down was the exact way we broke down the, the original construction, um, based on our, you know, estimated cost for the construction.
All right.
Has this been approved by Douglas? Yep.
They were, uh, they, it's on their agenda for next Monday.
I gotta say the same thing also, I gotta go and do it.
Exactly.
Contention upon Douglas approving it all, so type of motion.
No.
However, however you'd like to do it is, is fine.
I think, yeah.
Well, it's gotta get done.
Great.
It's gotta get done. All right, I'll entertain a motion, please.
A motion to approve change order for engineering services in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred dollars for the Campbell Road project.
I will second that. All right, motion by Stanton, second by Dean. Questions, discussion?
A question, it's not really related to this motion, but it's on the project itself. Uh, being a resident of Campbell Road, you were saying that it was a fast winter and here we are, but we're saying that it's a slow.
I, I meant to include that in my remarks. I was, I was going to credit the residents have been exceedingly patient, uh, with this process, and part of it maybe because they were anticipating the road to be torn up, maybe not to this degree, but torn up, it's, to some degree, the entire winter anyway, but. Especially, uh, our, our resident on the panel here. Excellently patient with us and very good to work with. This project is unique because, uh, Mark mentioned, we're, we're replacing water services all the way into homes nowadays, so we've, we've had our, our guy and other people in and out of a lot of homes, and they've been very, very patient.
Crazy times, uh, this is almost like a test case for you guys to a certain degree.
For all of us.
Yeah, you know, and, uh. You know, let's call a motion that I got a question that's related, if I may, and I'm sure it'll be interested other people who live up there as well. Wait, like, nothing to do with this motion.
All right, anybody else? All right, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Becken?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. One comment is that your guy up there is great, uh, and the contract has been very, uh, you know, easy to work with, and they've done a great job of keeping that road open. I mean, I, I think I've had to kind of do a loopy loop and head back the other way, maybe two or three times, like, several times a day, so. I, i- it's a tough job. I mean, that's a, that's a, you know, so, um, I think they're doing a good job.
Yeah, yeah, like I say, we haven't really had complaints with the work itself. Um, there have been some communication coordination things, that's, a lot is just part of the game.
The question I got for you, John, is now that, uh. The current contract is just to change the, um, they're not running service all the way back to the homes, are they? Are they not?
They aren't. Some, the longest one, I think, is five hundred feet. On the Douglas side, they've got a lot of them that are.
Come back there, right across the Douglas, I'm glad it's on that side. Um, okay, I, so that's gonna drag, drag on, plus there's some, there'll be some driveway restorations and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, they have two, they, they have been trying and, and trying to bring in more horsepower, and they have two directional drilling contractors lined up for either this week or, or next week to start drilling all those services. They've got a lot of them tapped, and so hopefully, like I say, hopefully, I've been saying that for a long time, but hopefully, we're gonna see some pickup on speed.
I'm fortunate, cuz I only have to go to the meeting to the shut-off valve.
You're in ease, if everybody was like you, we'd almost be done, I think, yeah.
I'm a good citizen. Money in my property over the years.
All right, very good. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have resolution two-two-zero-four-one-one-a social district resolution.
Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna lead in with the, uh, sample motion. This is on page forty-six of your agenda packet. Motion, 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 motion to apply, or to approve, resolution number two-two-zero-four-one-one-a for the redesignation of the downtown Sagetuck Social District and Commons Area pursuant to the downtown Sagetuck Social District Plan.
All right, very good.
It's a mouthful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Um, I'll make a motion after, or I'll, I'll comment after the motion's made.
All right, so let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve resolution number two-two-zero-four-one-one-a for the redesignation of the downtown Sagetuck Social District and Commons Area pursuant to the downtown Sagetuck Social District Plan.
Second.
All right, motion by Stanton, or motion by Leo, second by Stanton. Discussion, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, first is, uh, what's driving this change? Who's, who's requested the change?
Basically, the Michigan Legislature is, has a.
It's allowed, but who's asked for this? Who in the community has driven? Okay. Two is, I, I, I'm in support of the social district as a concept. I, I just think that we need to also be a little careful. There were some concerns from the police that were raised when we initially went into this, that, uh, the summertime was excluded for various reasons. I don't know if those conditions have changed. I'm not sure we should discuss that this evening. But, um, I, I think it does take away from some of the uniqueness of the social district to make it a year-round activity, and I, I just, I, I have some concerns about the safety aspects of this that were raised previously. Um, I'm just not sure what's driving this change.
So noted.
Just a couple of questions. Um, page fifty-one, the festivals and special events, um, just some clarification on that part. Um, if, for example, if Cow Hill Yacht Club is having Venetian Fest, and there's the beer tent going on, if they apply for the social district license, are they allowed to leave the tent, if you will, or does that stay in the tent?
They are not allowed. Yeah, yeah.
You have to, I gotcha, because that's a temporary permit, right?
Right.
With, got it. And then, um. That's it for now?
All right.
Till it come, till I think of the next one?
And I should, I'm, and I, I apologize, I failed to mention that Kate White. Wrote this up.
Yep.
And she's getting an award right now for being a.
Yeah.
Excellent master's student, so that's why she's not here tonight. So anyways, big, big ups, big props to Kate White, sorry.
Mr. Dean?
Um, you know, this is a resolution, so, you know, yes, we haven't tried it during the summer. If we do, and there are unintended consequences, the council can certainly act rapidly without having to have public hearings or anything. We can just simply turn it off if it becomes problematic. Am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Um, the other thing I was wondering is when we initially, uh, started this, there were some extra deputies put around, and I know that we didn't have any issues. Um, you know, we asked time and time again if we had, you know, any, you know, problems, and there was more like a, an education thing that was kind of happening, like, oh, you know, you know, just more educating the public. And we also had extra deputies around when it didn't seem necessary. Uh, how will we know if we're gonna have to pay for extra deputies if we didn't have issues in the past, if they're warranted going forward? That's the only question. They, the, uh, sheriff's department decided they needed extra deputies, and we had to say, okay, oh, I guess that makes sense. You, you know, you are the public safety officials in our area, and you decided that. But I felt like there was a lot of walking around and wasn't a lot of activity. I don't know what's gonna happen going forward. Are we going to have to pay for extra deputies or anything like that?
Well, do you have a comment?
I mean, we have Lieutenant Enfield here. So I, I did not hear of any issues, um, with the social district, um, to the earlier comments about education.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion, uh, people coming out of bars, not having the correct cup, um, people bringing their own drinks, saying, oh, you know, Sagetuck's a, a social district, so I can just bring whatever I want, but outside of that, Lieutenant, um, if you could help out, that'd be great.
I don't think we had the experience where it was like eighty-three days.
Thousand people walking the streets.
Social district and stuff like that. I think when we were running it, it was kind of like days like today and stuff, you know, I think it was towards some of the warmer times, but, um, yeah, I, I, I can't answer these questions. These are, these are things are kind of, you know, done. You know, it's kind of a test, testing, I mean, um, you know, typically bars are controlling, you know, you got what, fifteen bars or whatever in town, the, the list. I mean, they control their own things, there's a penalty for them not controlling the people.
Exactly.
You know, I can, one drawback I could see is if somebody becomes unruly, it, it may be, hey, here's your drink, you leave, we push you out into town, and then we end up having to deal them, I don't know. Um, you know, if this is gonna be shut down, then, you know, if there's issues, then we can deal with it, I guess, so.
We do have extra police officers on weekends.
Yeah.
Usually, that, that is, right.
Work on the weekends, so.
Weekends.
I'm, uh.
Yeah.
I'm not, you know. You know, really that against it, but what I don't think is, I'm, I'm more concerned about enforcement. I don't think self-enforcement is working. Because the one time I got a drink at an unnamed location, it was just in a plastic clear cup with a little, like, checkmark on it. There was no logo, there was none of the procedures and requirements that are so, you know, that are in these things. So who's checking that is more of a concern to me.
Sure.
Then, so that the rules are followed. Uh, and I had complaints from a couple of the, uh. Establishments, that, that's what they were walking in with, just.
I think that's where we ran into issues, was the establishments were calling on us quite a bit, was the people bringing drinks in, sitting down at establishments, either it doesn't have.
I'm saying, well, it's a social district, it's, you know, and then they feel obligated that all of a sudden someone else's, or a problem that I didn't create, I'm the one that has to enforce it or be responsible.
So some follow-up with the businesses would be appropriate, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I really think that, that's, the staff is gonna have to, you know, someone's gonna, in fact.
Yeah, one of the things that I would recommend is, uh, the training that's involved as the business owner who has the license, you know, really training your staff that's sending out the cup and all of those things, just some training that's involved, but that can be done.
Aren't we supposed to get samples of the cups? Aren't we supposed to at least go in and inspect to see that those cups are, that they're playing by the rules, so to speak, or?
Not, no, that's a liquor control commission.
True, that is a liquor control. They could lose their license if they.
Yeah, if they're doing bad things, then they can lose their license.
Well, no, I meant about, right here, that's your in this order, in our agreement about the certain types of cups with the, with the logos on it, and.
Yeah, no, we just.
We just say, hey, it's there, but if you follow it, if you break that rule, good luck, the MLCC isn't gonna come in and.
They do stings.
They do.
They do do stings, and that's how, you know, when you have a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to point out, too, that our sister city across the bridge has been an all-year-round social district from the very beginning.
Yeah, it's one of those things, if you leave our area, they're everywhere. They're in every tourist town. Um, it's just something that they're growing, and it's becoming.
Now, I think our, again, I, I'm against it, but Sagetuck is the most unique community in the state with a proliferation and the density of bars within a walking distance of going from the one at one end to the other end in five or ten minutes, and I think it's great, okay?
I don't know.
The years of my life, but.
Yes, right.
But, I'm not enforcing the laws or the rules or anything like that, so it's gonna be interesting. I'd like Scott's comments, and I think that's important, that that be stressed, that, you know. Give it, and we can take it away.
Yep, that's right. That's right.
And I want to reiterate, I'm not opposed to the idea. I'm not in support of extending it to a year-round activity, cuz I think it takes away some of the uniqueness of it for Sagetuck, and quite frankly, during the three months that summer here, people are not gonna have a problem finding drinks. They don't need a social district. And, and I think, you know, not having had the experience of a summer with this, um, I don't know if the concerns have changed since we first heard about this, you know, when it was first put in place. I, I don't, and I think the enforcement's an issue as well, and obviously, that's MCC, but.
You know, I, I had concerns initially with the social districts, um, but, you know, as we've gone through a couple of years, testing the, the shoulders of it, a- and there haven't been any significant problems. I guess for me, the only way to understand if this can happen smoothly and effectively, and in fact, maybe get rid of some of the confusion, because it's just standardized. I, for me, that's the only way to learn, so I think, I think sometimes you have to do, learn, and then adjust if necessary. So I'm, I'm personally, I think. We, we, we give it a shot with, I think, and I think I hear, I'm hearing this from members of the council, that you, we have no problem if, if people don't play ball and, and don't take, take the responsibility seriously, that we can shut it, we can shut it off very quickly. This, this is not an ordinance, it will not require any public hearing. We can meet at, at our very next council meeting and shut it down. So, I, I, I don't, I don't see any other way to to learn, to, to understand what we're dealing with, unless we, we try.
Question, right. So when your officers, your patrol guys, see someone with, with, obviously, a drink, of course, a lot of the drinks are in cups like that. If you're walking down the street with.
Can I get you a line for that?
See if that's coming from us, or you just let them.
If you're not causing a problem, we're not, you know.
Right.
We don't know if it's water or what, you know.
Well, I'm not talking about those.
If somebody has that, they know they're probably not supposed to have, so they're not gonna cause a problem.
No, but I'm just talking, if you see someone walking down the street with a beer, all right. In a glass.
Yeah.
In a cup.
Yeah, somebody's walking.
And it does not, it's not, uh, designated as from a social district. You are, you are checky, that, that.
See something that's parent or beer.
Okay, I mean, that's.
Beer can or something, somebody's coming up boats, or whatever, you know, we're telling them to dump it out, or, you know, usually.
Red solo cups.
Yeah, yeah, red solo cup.
But, I'm glad, see how it goes, you know, I don't, I think the other one was, I don't wanna say it was a flop or anything like, it was kind of a nothing burger, actually, you know. And who knows, so, but the summer is a whole different, a whole different, you know.
One thing I hope to happen is that, you know, obviously, there's long waits at our restaurants, long waits, and one way for the restaurants to make extra dollars is to be able to sell these drinks while they're waiting, and we just know, you know, the business owners in town, that has really helped.
They don't have, a lot of them don't have time to serve someone like that, you know.
Actually.
Yeah.
Center of the sandbar.
Butler was the biggest fan. They were head over heels.
Yeah.
It was nice that they had the outdoor.
Mayor, shall we call the question?
Uh, question's been called. Ma'am clerk, please call the roll. Question's been called. Question's been called. Ma'am clerk.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. All right, very good. Uh, thank you very much. We're to public comments, uh, on any item. If we've got anybody here in person or anybody online that would like to offer any public comments. See anybody? Nobody? All right, very good. Uh, correspondence in your packet regarding Tree City, USA, that was nice. The Art Club Award and the Bradelmeier Website Communication for Council. Boards and Commissions and Committee Reports, Blue Star Non-Motorized Trail, waiting.
Waiting, it's a, it's a waiting game.
Yes.
Every day when Ryan sees five-one-seven. He's a Lansing area code. I think today might be the day.
Yep.
We're talking about the grant.
Yeah, talking about the M dot tap grant, and we've made some arrangements, if we are so fortunate to put out messaging from three communities, which are. Represents the cooperative.
Okay.
Check community spirit of the entire endeavor, so.
Very good.
Cross your fingers.
Yes.
Yep.
Other Board Commission and Committee Reports.
Historic District Commission met April seventh. I was not in attendance, cuz I was on spring break, but, uh, there was an application to replace entrance doors and a transom for the church on Hoffman Street, and that was approved. So that was all, that was on the agenda that day.
Okay, anybody else? All right, council comments, start with me. Mark.
Look.
Oh, not at this time. Nothing.
Russ?
Uh, just wanted to follow up on a question. How many of the eligible? Uh, just to want to follow up on a question, how many of the eligible licenses actually applied for, for the social district? Or actually had social district permits last year? Does anybody remember?
I think there was like seven.
There's twenty-one on the list.
Oh, no, those are just those that are allowed to get them, but there was only about seven.
That was one of my questions, so, third, third or so.
That could change if.
Yeah, yeah, I just.
I don't know how we know.
More of a question.
It's just up to them to.
They have to get a resolution from council.
To be added, yeah.
Initially, we approved all of the ones that were in the district. So they just have to stop by the offices, pick up their resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So will staff be sending out information to?
I'd assume so.
Yes, of course. So Cindy, so, sorry, you didn't have a microphone, so for our audience at home, um, you were mentioning, say it again. Everyone, I mean, how many?
All of the, um.
Can you grab?
Oh, here.
All of the, um, restaurants, bars that have liquor licenses in the social district were approved in the original application. We had one new one and one transfer of ownership.
Mm-hmm.
But they were all approved, and so all they have to do, if they want to get the resolution, is stop by the office and pick it up. Um, I know that the Coral Gables did not pick up their resolution. There were a couple others that didn't, I think about maybe half of them did. Some of them were slower to get involved than others, but.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, just, um, was down by the docks, uh, the new Wicks Park slips, renovated Wicks Park slips look very nice. You know, compliments to, uh, the DPW team for doing a really nice job of them. I know that was a project that was kind of thrust upon them without a lot of planning on their part for, for their schedule for the years. And they've got it done, I think, in time for the, uh, for the folks that are putting boats in those slips, and they look quite good. So compliments to the team.
Very good. All right, um, with that, uh, the sign-up genius went out today for Household Hazardous Waste Day. It's the first, and we'll start communicating that across the board. Um, it went out to the folks who participated last year as a first swipe, and then, uh, we'll rely on word of mouth. And I see Scott's on the line, and hopefully, some, um, communication through the commercial record. So we're anticipating a very positive Household Hazardous Waste Day again. Um, other than that, it's, uh, nice to see the projects coming to completion, whether it's Butler Street or Campbell Road. Looking across the way here, it's actually been a busy fall and winter with everything that's been going on. So it'll be kind of nice to see it all complete in time for the summer. All right, with that, motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody? All right, very good.
So we went to, um, Pencile Bridge.
Yeah.
I'm tired. That's what, that's why I'm tired. I mean, all the, all the heavy stuff. So we looked.
It's like, you know, it's. Peninsula, so you have the sound on one side.
Yeah, it's so cool.
Really good.
I've seen pictures of.
Saw that picture.